It is 6:01, I will call the meeting to order. Everyone is present with the exception of Mr. Arndorfer. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have changes to the agenda. We need to add 10H. The approve, approve the hiring of Cassidy Milks as the head eighth grade girls' basketball coach for the school year of 2223 under the EA Master Salary Agreement of $2,459. And we also need to add 10I, the approval of hiring Nick Bly as the head seventh grade girls' basketball coach for the school year of 2223 with the master agreement salary of also $2,459. Were there any other changes? If not, I would look for a motion in a second to approve.
So move.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, actually. Nope, I need to go, I need to make a motion to retract that. I need to actually pull all the minutes from the consent agenda. The minutes were noted for September, October 18th, October 25th, November 9th. All the minutes are there, but there is no record of the vote, whether it was passed 7:0, 6:1, 6:2. So I would actually look for a new motion to accept the changes with the pulling of the minutes to be brought back next month, so basically tabling them.
Okay, make that motion.
A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave.
And I'll second that as well.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we look for approval of the agenda with the changes.
Make a motion and approve the agenda.
Motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Motion passes. Do we have any public input? No? Okay. Next, we move on to recognitions and good things happening. November 11th was Veterans Day. Thank you to all who have served and those as a family member of military personnel. The school district understands the sacrifice and is very appreciative. Also, congratulations to the new school board members, Dave Farlinger, Kyle Stern, and incumbent Tim Lewison. Also, thank you to Cassidy Milks and Teresa Fraser for their service. Next, we have reports. First up, we have student report. Jenna.
Athletics, the winter season started yesterday for girls' basketball. One act play, practice started. Our fall banquets happened, they're good. I'm thankful for this opportunity.
And what?
Thankful for this opportunity.
Oh.
Thank you, Jenna. Next, we have staff report. Trevor Carrier, Student Services Department.
All right, instead of me talking for a long time, I found a text, everything up and printed it, so I can have it. We're gonna go through a little bit of it so that you can see it. This is athletics and activities, everything that my job encompasses, so you can have it in writing, you can have it however you like to, but it's easier this way, as I don't report every month, so I think maybe once every quarter, whatever it may be, I think is a good thing, or. The first top half is just athletics. The fall season, ball wrapped up, obviously. I had your coach kind of give me a paragraph, kind of summarizing some things without having to go into a page, so I tried to cut it as short as possible. I put it in order of what I got them, so there was no bias to it. I wrote it up, I'm a football coach, so it was easy for me first. A lot of good things and a lot of, just to be able to provide the sports and all the activities we do is a great thing. Some of the records weren't exactly what we wanted, but things happen in life, and I think it's good for our character as athletics. I truly believe we have the great, best coaches we can have right now, regardless of if they know everything in the whole world or not, I think they do it with the right reasons. They have kids, so obviously, there's a vote tonight with some girls' basketball stuff, and I hope that goes well. We try to hire good people. That's it. Regardless of how much experience they have. And unlike some rumors I've heard in town, I interview everybody who applies for our job here. There's never one time I haven't interviewed anybody through my door. Now, what people have done in the past is on them. If you interview, if you apply, you get an interview, everything. So that's the truth. Kind of gave you everything there. Winter sports are in swing right now. Girls started yesterday. Boys will start next Monday, wrestling will start next Monday. Currently, we don't have any wrestlers. Boys basketball and girls' basketball are in flux throughout the conference, not just us. A lot of schools are having a lot of issues with participation. Kids just don't want to play as much anymore, or they're specializing, which is horrendous for all athletes. So if you're a volleyball player and you specialize in just volleyball, it's a bad thing. Any college will tell you that recruits you if you're good enough. They ask, the first thing they ask is what other sports to play. So it is an issue across the state, and stepping out, our boys team will not win. Our normal routine would be, let's say, up to seventh, eighth JV varsity. Our boys basketball will not win an eighth grade team, we don't have enough, so we'll run a seventh grade team, a JV and a varsity. The girls' team, I switched from last year. I'm not gonna make those younger girls play, well, I had that decision, but they will not be playing up to JV to fill a roster, they're gonna play at their own level, and then they're gonna fill in where Kelly wouldn't need them. On the varsity, I think we have seven, nine through 12, that's what they will have to play at some of those eighth graders up. But they will play their own level, and we'll have two teams down there which will grow up. Junior high girls, some of the eighth grader have big numbers, some of the eighth grade boys do not have big numbers.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
How many, do they have restrictions on how many quarters they can play?
Yes, our conference has, it's three, and we just had an A.D. meeting last Wednesday, sweets, which is great for me. You have three, unless you're playing junior high, we waive that, so you could play, teams are short, you could play some of the eighth grade, not a big deal.
You could play like an eighth grade game and then play a...
You could play a half of varsity, so if you're playing varsity, you only get three. So, for example, if you're an eighth grader, you're playing, you play that eighth grade game, that's two halves, and then you get one more of varsity, so it's up to Kelly to switch that how he wants to.
Okay.
I can play you one half of eighth grade and then play you the two halves of varsity, depending on participation and obviously injuries, which...
Correct.
...to be no fun at all at this point in time. But they're moving, they're going the right direction, so we're doing a good job. Activities I put on here as well, one act play has started. Chrissy Schuman stepped up after Marsha had left. This is a program I got back last year, which hasn't been around for a long time, for a while at least. Chrissy took over, she's doing a good job. Put on there right now, we have seven cast members, three crew, and then it's kind of throughout the month of January, our one act. Our music just performed yesterday, junior high choir and junior high band in Grand Meadow for Honors Choir and our Honors Music Festival. We will host that, I think 2030, we're at the bottom of the list, which is a whole nother, that's gonna be interesting. So, every school will do that. So, those are some things, some future options that I've looked at already, but we, again, we have to have participation, kids want to do it. More importantly, we gotta have people that wanna coach it, and unfortunately, we don't have that here, guys, so we can push all the agenda we want, but if we don't get somebody to coach it, it doesn't matter. So, two of the things that I've already talked to Chrissy about, or one of them, I talked about speech. She took on the one act play immediately, I can't make her do everything in here, that's not fair. She's doing a good job with that already, something we can get in with the speech, and then debate, these are things that are possible. I have no problem going through the process, which isn't easy to do, but we gotta have people that wanna do it. So those are future things. Missing assignments, obviously Jen talked about missing assignments, there is a new protocol we're doing this year, now coming from me and my department and my job, which takes up a lot of time, monitoring missing assignments through K through 12. I did it for all athletic, or my athletic programs when I was a coach, or I'm a coach, but now I'm doing it for all the school. So, missing assignments, kind of, the procedure is basic. On Wednesday, they have to have everything in by Wednesday, and all reports are made on Wednesday, you print out, and then everybody that has their home room would give these reports out to the kids that are missing assignments. So if Tim has four, he'll get a sheet with four, and where he's missing, I don't know what they are. If Teresa has one, she'll get a sheet. If Deb has none, then she doesn't get a sheet, and then she's doing a good job, no big deal. Knock on wood, right Deb? So what they do is, once on the Wednesday, you have until the rest of the week to get those in. If you don't have them in Monday, when I collect it, you now have intervention time. Intervention time is before and after school for 15 minutes, so basically, it's an extra half an hour. These kids get to go to the teachers, get to work with them one-on-one, and figure out what they need to work on, which is a blessing, more than you think, it's accountability there. So, we hold them accountable. If they don't show up to intervention time, they now, put seat time slash detention, those on Wednesday, Thursday, so it's important to be at intervention time, with the exception of obviously, if they're gone out of school, and I have a whole Excel spreadsheet that I color coordinate. You know, Teresa couldn't make it to intervention because she was sick for the day, so I highlighted green. So every teacher has access to this. This all comes through our teacher file, or...
Share folder.
Share folder, sorry. So it's called K through 12, missing assignments, and every teacher has a tab, so 12th grade has all the students, and every missing assignment, so Teresa's got four, we put a big four in there, and we highlighted yellow, the top set, you say, boom, I know immediately Teresa's got four. You calculate it, then, I have it since we've been doing it, which I'd love to show you someday, that we started it in September, so I have everyone detailed, from then till now. So a parent says, whoa, why does Jimmy get a D minus? Well, Jimmy's getting a D minus because every single time, he's got eight to nine missing assignments. There's your reason. Well, I didn't know that, which is probably what the reason's, what's gonna come next. If they don't show up to detention time, they're now in ISS, and I can promise you, if they get to ISS, which hasn't happened, they will be doing all their work right in front of me, or on the side of me, at the tables at my desk. So, we haven't got that far, luckily, which is great. This allows the track, teachers to track all missing assignments. Again, I put accountability on there, something that we talk about often, but sometimes I think we talk about accountability just in teachers and not just kids, or just certain kids. It's accountability for everybody. So, I can track it, I can pull up right now if I wanted to, it's completely up to date. If Tim was a teacher, he put in zero for talent. Teresa would now see that as an English teacher. It's automatically updated as soon as you punch these numbers in. So, this has worked. So the bottom of it, I have student classroom success, you can see the graph in the back. So if you flip to the back and the graph, and I know we all like graphs, previously, I did three years, I went back three years of first quarter Fs, that's it, first quarter Fs. I went back three years for a reason. Three years ago, we didn't have a student services. So if you look at that number, it's 78. It's 78 Fs from K through 12. Big number. Next, last year, we started the student services, that number dropped down to 47. Essentially cutting that number in half. Well, look at the, well, I put the kids in there because I wanted to see that. We also had 148 three years ago, and last year, we had more kids, far less Fs. So student services is working. On top of that, I got the numbers for this year. We have 10S, six through 12. So a matter of three years, that's the numbers change, the total students hasn't changed, but this hard data that you can see, and you can actually testify on the fact that this is working. I'm not promoting my own job, if you don't want me here and somebody else can do it, it's a great idea by administration. I was skeptical coming in, they both could tell you that. I wasn't exactly pumped, but I decided to do what's best for all students and not just 20 in my classroom. That's a big cry, and that's not just a testament to myself, but checking it, that's a testament to every staff member we have here. Grades are getting in, they're going to intervention time, they're getting their grades now. Now, what's that mean? It's easy, it's simple. If they're getting better grades, they're learning more. The only times we see missing assignments and you don't turn it in? If you don't turn it in, you didn't learn anything for that day. And if you didn't learn anything that day, curriculum and all things are gonna be cumulative. It's gonna, if you don't know it today, you're not gonna know it tomorrow. So this is a better information for us, it's an easy graph to see. I'd love to see that 10 get down to zero. It's gonna be extremely difficult, but I'm busting my butt trying to do that. When I have kids that have 40 missing assignments and now have zero, that's a blessing, and that's, that's, that's on our staff. I know we talked about it last meeting, but we have a tremendous staff here, and that's exactly why. So, those are some easy data points, just to see the missing assignments, and I know Jen talked about it, but at least I got to be here to talk about it a little bit. RCD, we're at a 72.7% rate right now, and that's just kids that get sent to my office. Now, I go back and check with the staff, did they do it? It's no more throwing a pencil and take it out of my roof. Nothing helps there. You're not benefiting the kid. As you can see, we're at 41% in May, so we've almost doubled that percentage. Teachers are doing the stuff that they're supposed to do. Aaron and I met with Larry yesterday, there's some more plans we're gonna fine tune here, because we're still learning and growing as we speak. But, for the most part, if a kid gets in trouble and you have a good relationship, they kind of bend over backwards to get the work done. I'm not the greatest teacher, but in my classroom, that's how it's always been, so...
When you say 72.7%, does that mean RCD worked in 72.7% of the...
No, that's, 72.7% is the teachers actually following through on RCD.
Okay.
So, like I said, if Teresa, you're teaching English, if Tim throws a pencil, probably a normal for Tim, you obviously just kick him out, right? Well, that's used to be the thing, right? You just did something wrong, and he lived off, and you just get out, go to the hunger hall's office, go to Carrier's office. We gotta eliminate that, because the kids, once they see that you don't care by just taking them out, and you don't want to talk about the actual issue, sometimes a kid threw a pencil because his parents are going through divorce. You don't know what the kid's been around in. I'm not gonna go into detail, but last week was extremely hard for me, so we can't just look at a kid and think, hey, he's a troublemaker. He doesn't know what's inside. So, that's a far cry, we're already jumping up higher, and Larry is happy with that, so those are things that are good. Report on bullying, another, one of the things I hear is bullying, bullying, it's a key word for everywhere you go. I'm not saying kids don't get bullied, I have one report come through my office, one. So if somebody says that their kid's getting bullied, did you report it? The answer is no, then there's nothing we can do about it, until I get told what it is. So, we had a case in report, this is just a bullying case, this is chronic stuff, and again, according to a policy, if I'm bullying somebody, if I'm bullying Cass, that's day-to-day all the time. It's not me calling Cass an idiot, and then we're fighting, it's just a disagreement. You know what I mean? So there's a difference between that, so if someone says there's bullying going on in Leroy, I find that hard to find, because it's not going to Aaron for sure, and it's not coming to me, so if I can't do anything about it, then are we really bullying? Or are we just causing issues and making culture problematic because things are lies? If someone comes to you and says there's bullying, did you talk to Mr. Carrier or talk to the teacher? If the answers are no to that, what, how am I supposed to guess that there's bullying issues going on? I believe that everyone's got kids, and for the most part, coming through me, parents call me immediately on the phone, and they'll tell me a story. I'm not giving them examples, but I'm just saying, it comes through me, and for the most part, it's been really good. I can talk the parents down a little bit, talk what's going on. Most of them, I'll just call them or text them, because they have a billion numbers nowadays, they're just in Leroy. So I think they like that. So, credit check and career plans are things that we've worked on. As you can see here, we credit check on October 5th for seniors to make sure that they're all on track. So I know we've talked about these things, but you want tangible evidence, here's some tangible stuff. We have 19 students, future plans, I even documented it down, one in the workforce, five, I think, might go four years, six might go two years, five might be undecided, undecided, two are going into military currently. Some of the examples of careers that these seniors have picked, graphic design, business, law enforcement, teacher, I giggle. Kind of loves Andy. Art, military, construction, cosmetology, electrician, stuff like that, these are things that they're thinking about going into. All are on track to graduate, which is a plus, because at work first, it hasn't been that way, but they have to do online stuff if they fail. I mean, you know how it is, if you fail as a freshman, that counts and fouls you, so you have to play backtrack on that one, which is something we're working on not to how it happened. I'll recheck it in February and May. These are kids. No one's mapped their life out, it's gonna change 17 times, but at least I have the information documented, and I can say this is what we're gonna do. Now, what can I do with this information? We're talking about maybe moving forward to classes next year, and like, hey, let's say Billy wants to be an electrician, maybe it's possible to help, maybe just Tim could show him some things in the real world for an hour, or whatever it's gonna be, you know, follow him on a job site. Not just do, leave and do something that doesn't bother you. Find something you want, you wanna go in business? Okay, go to the grocery store, work with Neil Vickery, behind the scenes and numbers, and how to do these things. You wanna be autobody? Okay, well, maybe we can team up with Caleb, he can go in there, and they can actually work and can see some things. This will allow them either to say, yes, this is what I wanna do, or absolutely not, it's change courses. So these are something that we can do as we move forward. We credit check the juniors on the 18th, 14 juniors for workforce, and this is gonna change dramatically, as you know. Six four-year universities, two two-year colleges, two undecided, some wildlife biology, some agriculture, some truck driving, teacher nursing, construction, nutrition, cosmetology, social work, are just some examples of careers that they want to do. I documented all, and then I can go try to find things, or when people come in and say, hey, I'm a cosmetology, whatever it may be, hey, go to Riverland and check this, or go to Amancisco, or Trish, or Meg, work on this stuff, because I can't teach you that. You want me to put makeup on your kind of hair? So these are some good things. Again, all of these juniors are on track. If they're not on track already, they will be now, because they've missed any online courses, they can't sneak through the crap, so these are all getting through. Attendance, first quarter, high school's at 94%, highest grade is eighth grade at 96.95, 93.45 elementary, class high and fifth grade, go to my son's class, 95.07. Overall, we're at 94, about 94%, if you do that according to grades, that's an A. So that means the kids are showing up. So if the kids are showing up, they're getting the work done, we should see improvements on test scores and other things. Brings me to testing. This is exactly what we have for testing, exactly what we tested, and this is all the information that you'd wanna see. Fastbridge, we've talked about, we did. ASVAB, ACT retake, told you there's seven seniors, we took it. We offered an SAT, which maybe, I don't know, I don't know enough about it, it's a $60 fee, nobody ended up doing it. Maybe it's something we can cover moving forward. I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of that aspect of who pays for what and when, but nobody took the AC, SAT, nobody really checked on the SAT anymore, I would assume it's more ACT. Even that's declined. When I was graduated, it was 2003, kinda needed 21 to get into four years, now it's dropped down to about 18, I think, so I don't know why that's dropped. In my personal opinion, I don't think dropping is good, but it is what it is. IXL is the new thing that's gonna take over for Fastbridge. I've been to some things, and I loved IXL as a teacher. We just got down to the diagnostics portion of this, this is gonna provide individual learning plans for each student. For example, Teresa and Tim, who did math in fifth grade, they're both on level, doesn't mean jack to the teacher, doesn't mean jack to you as a parent, it doesn't mean jack to the kid. What's gonna mean something now, and I just did it at home with my own son, is Tim's terrible at fractions and measurement, and you're awesome at fractions and measurement, so we can't do the same thing. It doesn't make any sense for you both to do the same math. You know what I mean? So you're working on measurement, fractions, your struggle was algebra and decimals. So why are you wasting time on fractions if you get that already? So like my son, he has to go home every, every night for 10 minutes and work on his IXL, he struggles with fractions. I don't need him to sit there and add all day long, because he knows how to add. He struggles with fractions, so he's in fraction every day until he gets that up. I think the IXL's automatic stuff, it's individual learning plans, props to our administration, especially Aaron for getting this done. I love IXL as a teacher, it's a great thing to use and to benefit for all kids. So if you all have kids, check that diagnostic report, boom, you can know exactly what Max's troubles are, exactly what Ashley's troubles are, and you can help them. Stop being graded, they just do the math right there, and you check them. It's easier. And as a teacher, now they can know what the problems are, and we can base lesson plans off that, or individual timing. Tim and I are gonna sit down, we're gonna work on measurement, man, here's some stuff on measurement. This stuff can be documented. So IXL's a wonderful program, again, we just got down with the diagnostics part. I go, I'm going out a lot here, still storage stuff, we had issues a lot, the storage is one of the things I wanted to correct when I took over as A.D. We have football equipment in 18 different spots, we have all equipment in 18 different spots at the school. It's horrendous to try to find anything, and then other people take your stuff and use it, which is a problem. And if it gets broke, you can replace it, it comes out of your budget, but we have issues. Football stuff is now all in the boys locker room and our old medical supply room, everything's in there, it's locked, everything. It's football related, it's in that room. Volleyball's going into the girls locker room, and Cory Ronenberg's old office, you can see it as locker rooms there, all volleyball stuff's gonna go in there. Cheerleading, we're moving, they've had a couple different stuff, they're moving to the back storage there in the locker room with the locked door, all this stuff is locked, easy to put all the cheer stuff back there. Basketball, stay home with a lot less stuff in there. Cory Ronenberg's new office is in the old, in the PE equipment room, so if you wanna find Cory, that's where she's at, kinda like Jill Cooney. Thank you to Peyton Row and Christopher Nohit, a couple others, they took some of the shelving down in that room. Cory reorganized, it looks tremendous, if you haven't looked in there, should've took the picture before and after, it looks much better. And that way, keeps her by the gym. The stage is completely clean, was something I constantly wanted to do, because the weight room's up there, so the one act and holiday concerts are ready to go. There's nothing that's been done, Tim waxed it, it looks beautiful, except for the curtain. Everything's up top, organized. I did that all last year, we repainted one side, Memphis and hated it, thank you for that. Old elementary PE storage room has been cleaned out, organized for better use. The access, you see it right down here, we had a bunch of crap under this, by the state or the door or the stairs coming up. That's not athletic, I was tired of seeing it, Aaron and I cleaned all this stuff up. So, that's some new stuff. Some new rooms that were created, the new health and conference room you see is the weight room. If you haven't seen it already, check it out, it's awesome. We use it all the time for football, health is in it all the time, study halls, it's great. I just talked about stairs. Medical supply room, if you walk by the old concession stand, that's where all the medical supplies are, they were located in the boys locker room, which is unfair to the girls, they can't use the table and tape when the boys are in there. We needed to get that stuff out, so it's open for everybody. Our trainer can now use it, opposing teens can use it, it's got all our medical supplies in there housed under one roof. Again, we have medical plus supplies in four different rooms, difficult to use, so we're trying to reorganize this whole school, which is harder than you think. So new purchases that we did this year are the 2021 state championship infernal country signs on the crow's nest, we'll find a better way to fasten those, and then we got the new bleacher seats in the big gym that had replaced, it seems just like the white ones were broke, Tim did all that last year, so that's some new stuff. Some future stuff at Athletic, this is just Athletic, obviously as the A.D., football field concession stand is a pile, so might wanna put that on the old agenda, figure out what you wanna do with that. I'm hoping a good windstorm blows it over, but it's not. It's pretty concrete in there, if you haven't seen it in there already. It's a pretty big, it needs a facelift, at least some tin on the outside, can I get the other one, if nothing else, and reorganize for sure. So that's something that we need to do, the budget moving forward. The crow's nest. Yep. Just built out the long over, if you wanna walk up it, it's gonna fall. It wobbles, I'm 200 pounds, and there's bigger coaches than I am in land for sure. You walk up that thing, and it's wobbling all over. That needs to be re-stabilized, maybe that's a good word? I don't think that would cost a lot, obviously, but we need to somebody in to check and look at that because the construction of it was poor, probably, because it shouldn't move like that. It's not good. I just, if you don't, trust me, just walk up it. You'll see, as soon as you step up four steps, it starts to wobble. Gym flooring is something you guys already talked about. I have an email out to them. Construction place, they're in Wisconsin. We've been talking back and forth. Obviously, there's a big ticket items moving forward. They're going to come and actually take a look and actually give us a better quote because it's hard to imagine. I gave them all the pictures and the footage. Luckily for us, it's just a nice rectangle. And that would include demo and everything like that. So, that's just on the dockets, the big gym scoreboards, which we're going to talk about tonight. We do have the shot clocks here. Netronics is going to install those for us. That's not part of the scoreboard quote. Yes, they're going to absolutely work well together because ours are from, I don't know, '84? I'm not going to go by the mountain Pepsi signs. Ours are old. I'm surprised even ours would work in sync. So, new backwards, a small gym. BSN came when they got my helmets. They're going to give us a quote on four new side hoops because those hoops are very, very old and bad. So, it's something that we could do moving forward. Future big ticket purchases. I know that now I have access to the Athletic advertising money. We had two grand left last year. Didn't know I could even use that account because we do all the work to get it in, but what's the money doing? Well, it helps bigger ticket items in Athletics. I've been here for 10 years, 11 years, and I've never had an opportunity to use that. So, I don't know where that funding's been or where it's gone. We've never purchased anything with it and I think that's unfair and ridiculous. I can tell you at the Coach's Clinic and every clinic I've been to, we do not have a booster club and to survive with Athletic program without a booster club is ridiculous in most cases. Grand Meadow has $900 helmets, they're amazing. Booster club bought, we don't want much with our booster club. We don't even have those. Dollars have come through. So, we've got to be financially responsible. I think if we started this year, we had $6,600, according to 2000 last year and 46 this year at $66 in the advertising. So, we're going to use some of that. Also, student to the accounts with, for me, ours are built on driving or painting driveways all the time. And then, Ryan's basketball was kind of concession stands. We've all kind of found money somehow. And then, obviously, the district gives us all different budgets, but they're not going to get big ticket items. So, we just purchased a new Cardinal mascot for the cheerleading in our school. That was $1,545. Our old one was absolutely in crappy condition. I was nice enough to buy a fan for it, but it's old and bad. So, that has been purchased and it's done. That came directly from our advertising money from last year. So, that would shrink that down. Football headsets were old technology. We just talked about technology in our last meeting. Ours are 10 years old. They didn't work in the state games. They don't work very well in Grand Meadow and Lanesboro because of the distance and the height and the weather. And they're in poor condition. So, we get new ones. $4,500 bill was for that. They gave me basically half off if I traded in my own crap. I told them it's bad. I told them it's outdated. I told them exactly what's wrong with it. They said they didn't care, they'll give me 50% off. I had to take that deal. So, we got $2,200 in trade-in. I used $1,000 on my student account activity and then we used 13 for the advertising money to get those done. And they sent them the very next day. I don't know if they thought we were still in playoffs, but. They rushed delivery. So, thank you. I'm glad we have it for you. Some other big ticket items that we would try to look at moving forward. Basketball shooting machine, Ryan's all over. Those are expensive. They shoot the ball out to you, shoot it out. A lot of schools have them. There's no way we can afford that. We don't have $64 just laying around to buy these things. Kelly and they're going to try to work together. Even if they combine their school budgets at $750, they're not even a third of the way there. Of course, they're going to work together and do things, which is great. So, that's something that maybe someday down the line, if we save it for a year and a half or something, we can do that. Volleyball wants a passing machine, $2,000. And then, football field benches, as you can see, if you sit on them, they might just break. They're old and maybe just new wood ones. Maybe what we could do with this, some just ticket items, we'll see moving forward.
Which football field benches are wood? Oh, the little ones.
They're just old. I mean, literally, they're falling apart. Literally falling apart. I mean, I don't know when the last 10 of those were purchased. Again, outside stuff for weather, it's difficult to keep up. So, any questions? I know it was a laugh, but it does a lot for my job. I had a lot to do, so. Any questions? Sorry, I need to get back in a second.
Excellent report.
Keep it, if you want to shred it.
Thank you. Thanks, Trevor. Next, we have Erin.
Okay, we had Larry Thompson in the building yesterday, our RCD trainer. He was in the classrooms all day observing, meeting with teachers, coaching them. And then, after school, we had a three, or two-hour presentation where kind of review, got everybody caught up to speed, helped the new teachers that haven't been through our training get caught up on that. So, that was great. Met with Trevor and I to, like we said, get our, keep increasing our numbers and our usage and we're coming along really well. Friday, I'm going down to Oneonta State. There's a seminar for the recent, or the ones that are going to be graduated in teaching. They're inviting principals down there so we can do mock interviews and kind of make connections and kind of sell our school and stuff like that. So, I'll be going down on that on Friday. Some of the things I just, you know, some things that I do now that we have the Student Service Center, do all these, like, and Trevor and I work well together up there and getting those things. But things that I'm opened up to do now, more principal-wise stuff too, is why do I go in teachers' classrooms? Well, I have evaluations I do. We use a Marzano framework. We have an observation cycle, a three-year observation cycle. The staff is divided into thirds and they observe. Now, everybody else, I still do walkthroughs for all staff. I still do classroom visits, which are informal. The walkthroughs are, I do documentation. Obviously, evaluations do documentation. Classroom visits are just informal, walk in and visit. I also now have an RCD form. So, when I can go to classrooms now and observe teachers using that, so that's another way. And then, when I need to go observe for student behavior observations or anything like that. So, all these different ways now, I'm able to get into the classrooms. I had all the first round, all my first evaluations done by the end of October. Now, I do walkthroughs for November and December. And then, I do third round, or second round evals in January and so forth. So, getting in everyone's classrooms regardless if they're on the evaluation list, which is great. Years ago, if I could get the evaluation done, that was a plus. So, now I'm able to get in everybody's classrooms multiple times for different reasons. Which now then leads me to talk about strategies, interventions, and then also curriculum as we move forward with that too, so.
And I have a quick question. What's the guidelines for new teachers? Do you have guidelines of going in there more frequently?
Yeah. There's, new teachers are non-tenured or three times a year.
Three times a year, okay.
So, like, so, I'll back up. So, like, the tenured teachers that are on the observation cycle, I only need to do one formal evaluation a year. But if you're non-tenured, I have to do three.
Okay.
And then, the ones that are not on the observation cycle have to also do a peer review. So, they have to get somebody to do almost like a mini evaluation on them and then hand it in to me too. So, we're getting in for those type of things as well. So, a lot more, I think we're going to, more quality there for the teachers. And like I said, more diving into curriculum and teaching and stuff like that. So, that's been, that's been really good. We've started our Cardinal Pride, which is middle school, high school student recognition. That is quarterly. Our first one will be next Tuesday. We talk about honor rolls, attendance, and then anybody that can get observed or nominated for, you know, Cardinal Pride tickets, which Tiffany, Tim does a really good job of getting the Leroy bucks. Kids get those type of things for these, like that. Cardinal Time is our elementary student recognition. We do that monthly. And then, you guys probably saw the wall when you walked by. We have the Be I in Kind. And then, we have, I just got the, I'm working with a curriculum base for the, duct tape is part of one of the sponsors and it's something about stick together, be kind. And they sent me duct tape. So, eventually, what we're going to do is when the students get recognized monthly or quarterly, what they'll do, they'll get a piece of colored duct tape, put their name and grade on it. And so, that whole wall will be decorated by the end of the year, hopefully, if everybody's, all students' names in our school on there. So, hopefully, that is going to come to fruition here soon. So, I'm excited about the kids and hopefully they like that. Parent-teacher conferences started yesterday and then continue next Monday. And then, some of the things for student supports, I've had, after the first quarter, I've had a couple of parents reach out, which is awesome. Their students need some extra help or assistance. So, we have targeted services after school right now that Kathy Dudley is going to get up and run. Title I, that's during school. Tutoring. We are talking with our Leadership Academy and NHS about doing tutoring. Having older students tutor younger students if we can. That could be after school, before school, during school, if it fits schedules. I know I've had some teachers that have volunteered to do tutoring as well. Intervention time, that's new this year. That's, all teachers are in their classroom 15 minutes before the day and 15 minutes afterwards. No copies making, no running errands, no phone calls. They are in their room waiting for children, for students, for those 15 minutes. So, when you hear Trevor talking about intervention time, that's what that is. Seat time, that is one day a week before school and one day a week after school. It's a 45-minute slot where students are, we send them there if they're not doing intervention time. Maybe they need to make up some attendance. But it's with a teacher. So, there's a teacher in there that can help them. It's not, some people may have to look at it as a punishment, but we're looking at it as an opportunity to, you know, for teachers in there, if you need extra help, that's what we use that for. And then, we do, we did have Reading Core just start maybe two or three weeks ago. So, Reading Core, and that's just younger elementary. So, that's with reading. So, those are a lot of the different student supports we have. So, if anybody is, needs extra help, they just need to reach out, let us know. We, hopefully, a lot of these, we try to catch with our testing, like Trevor talked about, and/or teacher referrals. Sometimes, you know, we get parent referrals as well. So, anything along those lines. And like I said, we wrapped up first quarter. Not too bad. Just a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff, a lot of really good stuff, like you heard from Trevor talk. Things are just starting to work together with office to office up there and things like that. So, it's been a great marriage between Student Service Center and, you know, there and allowing all of us to do. I felt previous, we were doing a lot of things, was it a mile wide, what an inch deep type was the saying or whatever. And now, I feel we're really diving down into a lot of these things as you guys hopefully are seeing and understanding that we're doing now. So, feel really good where we're at.
All right, thank you, Erin. Jen.
All right, good evening, everybody. Let's see, let me start with the not-so-fun stuff. I'm kind of now wrapped up in a lot of MDE reports. That's kind of my time this point of the year. So, I'm going to be doing the zero-to-four-year-old census counts, compulsory instruction, compliance reporting. That's not due until December, which is kind of nice. We have already scheduled our World's Best Workforce Summary for January. So, you'll hear more about that in the upcoming months. I do have our Minnesota Common Course Catalog coming up. That's due December 9th. That's where we provide data to MDE about the courses that we are offering students and where they fit within their matrix. I was just telling the Building, Grounds, and Safety Committee that I do have a facility age and square footage report I have to give in terms of the district to MDE here in December as well. So, if it looks like I'm kind of in front of my computer a lot lately, I truly am. That is the truth, I am. And then, a couple others that don't mean a whole lot to us because they're yearly things, but I'll be getting those out as well. Couple other fun maybe things, our staff spotlight. Chrissy Schuman is our December staff to spotlight. And so, you'll be seeing that on our social media sites. If you hear of any, we're kind of getting to that point in our school year too. So, usually, it's our social worker, Erin and I, reach out to our staff if there are students or families in need, whether it's clothing, food, whatever it may be, transportation maybe, let us know and we'll do what we can to support that family. Weather also plays into all of this. Please be sure to check our social media sites as well as our TV and radio stations for any inclement weather-related issues, whether it's a late start, an early release, or a day off. But we try to get that information out as soon as possible. Our school district audit will happen here in December. So, look for that in our next board agenda. But Teresa and Deb and I, along with Chrissy Millering, are going to be meeting with the auditors November 22nd to do a quick preview of that. So, just a friendly reminder on that. Also happening in December will be our Truth and Taxation Meeting. So, the board meeting starts at 6:01 that night. That is statute. Oftentimes, teachers will respond to me and say, spelling error. It's six o'clock, it's a meeting. I'm like, oh, wrong, wrong, wrong. It's 6:01. So, 6:01 is Truth and Taxation. And so, we'll have a little presentation on that, both Chrissy and I. Also, I know this is hard to believe, but we are hitting the beginning of December rather shortly. Chrissy and I are looking at big picture budget. So, we're going to start having those discussions. And that, of course, eventually ends up into the classrooms, into the departments, in with Erin and all of that. So, you will definitely get, as you know, more information from me about the budget and what we're thinking and where we're going with things. Erin mentioned this earlier about curriculum, pretty cool things that he sends to me and that we're diving into. Science, the teachers are going to gather samples as many as they can by January and start digging deeper into those and what fits best with our students and our teachers. And they want to have a decision made by March or April. Again, that's good timing for us because that's when we're building our budget around that curriculum piece. So, we'll let you know more about that. Our English and Language Arts Department, they're creating their own grade-level curriculums and that's through a matrix as well. But they're going to have physical materials in front of them so they can study them and make sure they can input those into a curriculum. And as they're reflective of Minnesota standards, that's our biggest piece. When you're looking at curriculum, you really need to follow our standards. So, with that, year one, they want a completion date would be June 30th. So, this year. Year two, work on transitions from grade level to grade level. So, moving from first grade to second grade. What's that transition going to look like for that student when it comes to what they are learning? How deep are we getting and where are we going?
In a specific, okay.
Yes.
Like science.
Like a scope and sequence kind of thing.
Right. But like, you're saying we're doing science, but in year two, we're going to say, we're looking at science between this grade and this grade and this grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
And English too.
And English too.
Yep.
As I think, I want to say Trevor mentioned it, IXL, they are diving deep into that. And that's going to be, I think, a really valuable resource for us where we can really look individually at kids. And Trevor said that. You know, we can look at not only, and he mentioned Tim and Teresa as the examples. Tim knows statistics. Teresa might know decimals. We have to teach them differently then, so then they can reverse and be, both become knowledgeable on each. So, that's going to help us tremendously. Oh, this is kind of a fun thing. Tiffany, Tim, she will be having next term a student-teacher. So, they are coming from SDSU. So, we're working on all the fun paperwork for that. So, we'll be sure to share information on that particular person when they come in. Finally, I think that's all tonight, for now anyway. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jen. We'll move on to number nine, the consent agenda. We have tabled all the minutes to be brought back in December with the corrections made. Next, we have treasurer's reports, the November bills and October wires. October is treasurer's bank and report and bank reconciliation, budget summary and student activity funds. Were there any questions? Okay. Next, we have fundraisers. The Washington DC trip, the month of November 2022. They want to do a RADA cutlery sales with the increased cost of the DC trip. The students are requesting another fundraiser. And this fundraiser has been done in the past. We have no donations this month. And for personnel, we had the approval of hiring of Kimberly-Eide Hungerholt, paraprofessional for the school year of 2023. Master Agreement Step 1 at 1303 per hour. So, if there are no questions or concerns, we look for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
And we'll be approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Dave. Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have policy review. Second readings of Policy 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. Policy 530, Immunization Requirements. 531, The Pledge of Allegiance. 532, The Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds. 533, Wellness. And 535, Service Animals in School. I was not able to be at the policy meeting last Tuesday, Cass. Were there any updates?
I was not able to make it either.
Oh, so I'm looking at Jen.
Yeah, I'll update for you. Actually, no changes for these second readings from the last time you folks approved the first reading. So, we had some discussion here and there, making sure we're doing the pledge weekly, you know, all those little things. But overall, no changes in language for you guys.
So, if there are no discussions or changes that need to be made, we look for a first and a second for those policies to be finalized.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of policies. 529, 530, 531, 532, 533, and 535.
Okay, I have a motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have policy review for the first readings of 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. 602, Organization of the School Calendar and School Day. 603, Curriculum Development. 604, Instructional Curriculum. And 605, Alternate Educational Services.
Yep, we had some really good discussion on this at the meeting. Just, you know, we have quite a few teachers on the committee. And so, we were able to dive pretty deep into these policies. And at this point, because it is a first reading, we don't want to have, we'd rather have the whole committee there before we make any changes. So, we highly recommend you approve the first reading as is and then we're going to continue our, some of our deep discussion at our next committee meeting on this one.
I had a couple of questions on 603. If you go 603, item number four, it says the school board needs to establish an advisory committee. We need to look at adding that to the January agenda when we do the reorg, adding that committee.
Is that 604 or 603?
603. 603, Curriculum Development, that we need to have an advisory board. So, we need to establish a committee for that, which also includes, you know, parents, students, staff. And then, I have a question on 603, Section 5. The site team, it says it's supposed to include one parent. Who's the parent on the site team?
We don't have a parent. We don't have a parent. We do, that's a staff thing we do.
There is no parent?
Not at our school site team, no.
Okay, so according to policy, though, it says we need to have one parent.
I love to see a site team.
But you're also a teacher. Do we have anybody that's just a parent that's not pulling double duty?
Here's my question on that, though. This might be discussion for, but if we need to re-change the name of that, because what we talk about would not be pertinent for a parent to be on.
Oh.
We're talking, is ours a staff-related?
Okay.
So that can be changed in the policy?
So, well, or I just don't.
Or it just relates to this policy.
Or I change, we don't need a site team, it could be a leadership team or something.
I think we need to look at the statute and see, we should go back and take a look at the statute to see what is addressed.
Are you talking like what we legally have to have on the site team?
What we legally have to have. So like, either we can, if we don't, if we want to just take that out of our policy, or are we legally bound to have it in our policy?
Very good.
So I was going to say, Teresa, did you have more, or can I jump in?
I was going to move on to six, I had a question on 604.
Okay, okay. I would, you can ask the question, but I would also like to request that we don't set Policy 603 or 604 till we finish the strategic planning. So much of it seems to be encompassed in with that. And I think when we get to the end of the strategic planning and we have that document, it may help us.
I like that idea.
To be informed.
I don't recommend that. Yeah, I like that. Yep.
The one question I had on 604, and this would be Jen and Erin, it says Elementary and Middle School shall offer at least three and require at least two of the following four arts areas, dance, music, theater, visual arts. High schools shall offer at least three and require at least one of the following five art areas, media arts, dance, music, theater, visual arts. Are we meeting that?
Let's say we offer. I mean, how do you want, I mean, is there a definition of how? Because we, right now, without our teacher, our offering in high school would be online art.
Okay.
So it was an option.
Okay.
You know, so. But then we have music and band, choir, and art.
Correct.
There's a lot in these two. There's a lot in these two. And I think that after we do our strategic planning, we might be able to address it a little better. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I'd like to just table it. I don't even want to do the first reading acceptance. I just want to table it till, when are we going to get it in January?
We will meet again in December.
But when will, I guess, policy?
We will approve the, the timeline has us approving the final evaluation, or the final.
Strategic plan.
Yes, the final draft on the December 21st meeting.
Right.
So we'll have it done in January, so you can bring them back in January.
Yeah.
So do you want to table just 603 and 604?
Well, those are the ones I had the most questions about.
Yeah. No, no, that's perfectly fine. I'm with you. I know where you're going, and I like it, for sure. I think we should, too, table those two.
Why don't we just table all the first readings? Because then we can go.
We could, because there are six hundreds.
That way, we can, as a committee, go over everything as well.
Okay.
Just table it till January?
Because I wasn't there, I would like to be.
Oh, yeah, because we had good conversation, you guys. So absolutely.
Why don't we just table all first readings? So I'll make a motion for that.
Till January?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table, or motion for tabling 601, 602, 603, 604, and 605 until January. I have a motion by Cass. Is there a second?
I second that.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the Resolution of Canvasing Return Votes for the School District General Election. The resolution states that we, the School Board members of the Independent School District Number 499, LeWry Ostrander, certify that we have canvassed the returns of the state elections held on Tuesday, November 8th, and herein specify the names of candidates receiving votes and the number of votes received by each candidate, have therein specified the number of votes and against, and for, and against any ballot questions voted in this election. It appears by the returns of election precincts voted in this election, duly returned to filed, open, and canvass, are now remaining on file with the desk clerk, excuse me, in the office of the Clerk of the LeWry Independent School District. So these are both resolutions, so I need to do a roll call vote.
What did that actually say? That we just agreed that what was, the vote was taken and is done?
Yeah, we agree that the election was done.
The election is done.
Yep, we agree that it was done, and then we have to agree that Pat, as the Board Clerk, can issue the certificates of the election.
Gotcha.
All right, so the first one, we have the Resolution of Canvasing the Return Votes. Deb?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat is not here. Chad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yep.
Cass?
Yes.
Yes, and I am a yes. Resolution passes. The next is the Resolution Authorizing the Issue, issuance of certificates of election. And this is what Pat will do for the new elected board members. Deb?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat's not here. Chad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yep.
Cass?
Yes.
Yes, and I am a yes. Resolution passes. Next, we have Recommendation to Approve the Increase of Junior High Officials' Pay.
All right, folks. It's not much of an increase, but officials are hard to find, whether you're in a small school, large school, it doesn't matter. And you've seen, too, that even university games are being changed from a Saturday sometimes to a Friday night. So they're very hard to find. So what you're looking at here is what AD Carrier has put together for you. So junior high officials volleyball or B-ball games, per game, what they would make. And then here are the amounts, the 10 schools, five schools at $25 per game, four schools at 30, one school at 27, 28 per game. So this would be for essentially, at this point now, since volleyball's over, our winter sports season, or football and volleyball, I'm sorry. So our winter sports season, so our girls and boys' basketball. So basically, we're basically asking, because we want, granted, normally I could do a $5 increase, but we came forward to you with the Athletic Handbook, and this was in there. And you guys approved that Athletic Handbook with the $25. I need to come back with you to say, can I amend that to $30 rather than 25?
Barely covers their gas.
That's what we're hoping for. It'll cover their gas. That's what we're hoping.
I make a motion that we increase the official, the junior high official pay to $30 per game.
Okay, I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have LED Project Update Discussion and Approval of Attorney Option. Jen and I had a conference call with Morgan on the 28th. She did verify again in that conversation that yes, retrofit is in breach of contract. The question we posed to Morgan was, if we agree to this settlement, does that set a precedent going forward with other contractors kind of doing the same thing? And we used, I think I used a plumbing example, that if, you know, we wanted this and the plumber did this, can they come back and say, well, you guys took this last time? You know, is that going to be an issue? Morgan said we are actually setting a precedent by agreeing to a settlement, that we are holding them accountable in one way or another. She said that, you know, there's really nothing, and she reiterated again that there's no reason why we can't ask for attorney's fees as well, because they are in breach of contract, and it could be a whole lot worse on their end. So, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
It was actually, this time, a really short conversation.
I wrote down seven minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still eight minutes.
Probably was. And as for exactly how much of the attorney's fees that has cost the district so far yet, I'm not sure.
She hasn't billed us yet. So we'll see.
It could be minimal, it could be a lot. I know, you know, the first package was quite a bit of research, and Jen and I've had a couple of phone calls. Now you put them together, you have at least 30, 35 minutes total between both. So. What would we like to do?
I feel that she gave us the answer that it is not going to affect us moving forward. You know, like, we're not setting a precedent. We're setting a precedent that we expected something, but we're not setting a precedent that we'll take anything. So I feel, you know, I feel like she covered it for us.
And they're giving us something.
Yeah.
I mean, that $10,000 we can actually use for the next item on the agenda.
Exactly.
Yep.
What do we think about asking for $10,000 plus the attorney fees?
I'd agree with that.
I would say that's fair, given going through that, you know, going through their proposal. I mean, just in materials alone, it's going to, say, you know, we held them to this breach of contract to change out the bulbs. They're going to have at least 30 grand alone in purchasing new bulbs, plus putting it in. I mean, so, you know.
Should we just set a number for the attorney fees, not knowing what they are for sure, and then just saying, just say, throwing out a number, just say $1,000, so that this can just get.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Dealt with, without having to wait for the attorney's.
You could say the $10,000 plus $1,000 towards.
Attorney fees.
Legal fees.
Or legal fees.
What if the attorney's fees are 3,000? Now we've just lost, you know, can, or, you know, can we leave it as an open-ended, that, you know, Morgan could put the bill together, that this is the bill for everything we've done for TRC, and send it to them so they can see it. Because, I mean, it could be $1,000, it could be 3. We have no idea how long it took Morgan to do all the research to write the original report. So.
I have a bill on my desk from them.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember what it is, but what I'll do is I'll email the board tomorrow on that exact total.
Okay.
Unless you want me to go get it right now. I know where it is.
Is it just the LED, or is there other stuff on there as well?
I don't, I didn't really look into it that quick, but I do have a bill from them.
Don't you email the board, let me email.
As I say, we can leave it open-ended, too, is that, we will accept the $10,000 plus the attorney fees that were acquired due to the breach of contract.
Oh, yeah, I can email the board tomorrow.
But do we want to make a motion tonight?
I would recommend it.
I would say, I think it's, we got to, we got to do something at this point.
I think so, too.
Have we contacted them yet?
Adam has emailed me.
So before we settle on any bill, yeah, we still got fixtures that aren't working outside.
Out here, there's one up here, too.
The egg one does work. That was shut off by.
That's shut off by need the second week of school, because I need the brackets to turn on the poinsettias. Otherwise, it won't make color. I shut that off, the breaker will shut off the 11th of September. It'll get turned back on when I'm done marketing all the poinsettias. You have to, otherwise it screws up the daylight. They'll think there's 24 hours light, and they'll never, the brackets will never change. So that, it's worked just fine. I just shut it off. If somebody would have asked or gone and went to the breaker box, you would have found that out.
Does that breaker control the ones on the, I'm guessing, the very outside of the building that shows to the empty lot?
They may have, they may have, well, it's noise to that side. And yes, they'll be back on probably by the 15th. As soon as I sell out of poinsettias, it'll be right back on. But I got to get them to turn, because I have red ones that are taking forever to turn right now.
Okay.
Makes sense.
We haven't had a final walkthrough yet.
No. We would want a final walkthrough, too.
We need a final walkthrough.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't done that.
Okay, so I mean, yeah, we can make a motion that, you know.
Before any final payment is maybe.
Correct. That it'd be that we'd accept the $10,000 plus the attorney's fees, you know, that were acquired, and, you know, based on a final walkthrough and approval from the district.
Yep, for sure.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave.
I'll second it.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Recommendation to Approve the Purchase of New High School Scoreboards.
All right.
Trevor.
Yay, we're all going to talk about this. Well, this has been on our radar for a few years now, but we're kind of now at that point. The tipping point was when the Minnesota State High School League made the determination to have shot clocks installed by next year, that we have to legally use them now during our girls' and boys' basketball seasons. This year, however, we did purchase those, and we are going to use them on occasion per the conference. Okay, so that's something different, but at least we have those. Now, if you look at our scoreboards, they may look a-okay to you, but if you look a little closer, you can tell they're way back 20-some, possibly 30-something years old. We're not totally sure. But what I sent you was a couple pictures of what were, what were sent to us, related to what they're going to look like now. So on one side of the gym, we would have a little bit smaller scoreboard, and it would look like this one. I'll hold this up. Kind of smaller, what you see now that we currently have. On the other side of the gym is a really exciting one, is the bigger one, where it's going to have the student athletes' number of jersey, maybe how many fouls they had. If it's a, if it's a back or boy, there's definitely five in that row, number five. Anyway, but it has everything you need, so for, so the parents get more involved, and our, our, you know, kids get more involved. They love that. So it's a pretty cool thing. They're pretty expensive, no doubt about it. I sent you numbers that were roughly around the $25,000 mark, and that's kind of where we're hovering right now. I would request that they not bill us until next July, our new fiscal year budget, and that's pretty common, and they were fine with that. That's not a problem. And so just because install, you know, won't be until the spring, so I know my, I knew my billing wouldn't come later. So.
That number includes installation.
Yes, yes. So that's pretty exciting. But yeah, it's, it's just kind of a neat thing. We're kind of at that point, too, and I'm sure Trevor can attest to this, the wiring, you know, with any console, they get beat up on, for sure. And so that wiring heading up to that scoreboard is not maybe as strong as it used to be. And so if that would go out, many of you recall this past fall, or two years ago, there was a football game where the lights went out, and that football team had to, you know, it was a loss for them because their lights went out. And so that's what would happen here, too. So there's those little things, too, that you think about for our kids.
So the big one, is that going to go on the championship banner wall? I was wondering if it was going to.
The Cardinal pride and the championship banner will have to be moved. That'll be very à la Grand Metal. They have the stat panels to people see them. And then the small side by the, will be the smaller one.
Smaller one going on the opposite side? Okay.
They are old. Tim can attest. He's been up there a thousand times with lights and basketball and stuff. They're just, she's right. You can ask Dan Hanson, he wiggles his left knee, and the whole thing goes out. And that's just, they're just old. I mean, a far.
We're at that point.
RC sign, the search goal sign up at the top, those signs will be updated. I mean.
I don't have any doubt that we need to upgrade, but I'm, I'm really uncertain whether we really need these two side panels. You know, we're not, we're not in a huge stadium. I can see the number of the kids who are standing out on the court. That seems like a lot of money for us to see that number 12 and number 15 are on the court, because it's not like a huge stadium. I can see that number 12 and 15 are on the court.
But also, I will just nicely disagree. It also shows their stats, their fouls. It's not just who's on the court, it shows all the things you want to see and know.
But who needs to see and know that?
Yeah, I'm certainly in the old place.
Really?
The other issue.
Standard, I mean, a lot of people are doing, I mean, the ADs, a lot of people are doing it.
The other issue would be, I'm sure that the rest of the teams in our conference probably have the same thing.
They do.
They're starting up.
And we'd be the Lone Ranger.
That didn't have this?
Yes.
Well, I just, I don't, I kind of agree with Deb, because, I mean, the big middle sections, you know, 5,000, 54, those two little side panels are $8,000. I mean, I played basketball for over a decade. We never had that. We did just fine. As a player, I knew how many fouls I had, and if I didn't, the, you know, assistant coach doing the book on the bench would be able to tell me. So that's where it's hard for me, is that, you know, the, the big section alone is, you know, 54, but these two little smaller panels, you know, they're $8,000.
Disagree on that aspect of it.
I also think there's opportunity for advertising businesses on there, so we could actually get advertising to actually pay for this, so it would be an offset for the district, like other districts do.
Does the scoreboard come with that on it, or is that another additional piece to do that?
You can attach it to either side.
Yeah, like football outside, you left that top part, you can see, you could use advertising for that. We could name it whatever.
Trevor, what are the, will we continue to have wrestling meets in here or not, as long as we don't have participation?
Depends on the people we have. We don't have anybody in wrestling right now, so.
So then they wouldn't have a meet here?
No, not as of right now. I mean, that's not the same way in the future.
Because it, that's, those are used for that, too.
Yeah, volleyball's used for it. This is a goal, whatever, maybe. There's more to it than this, too. A lot of schools are getting the, the light-up rectangle backboards that light up when the shot clock goes off, because it's a timing thing. You can see when the clock goes off, because the big thing goes up. We're not even asking for those, and those are three grand a piece or something for the stat. Some tools are doing that, so.
I have a, when I was in Kenyon, I took a picture of the big, big scoreboard they have on the wall with advertising on the side. So if you want to take a look at that, that's what it looks like. It's on the bottom of it.
Do the panels attach, or are these panels we have to purchase, or could it be anything?
You could do whatever you want, basically. It's just whatever attaches to the wall.
I mean, do you think we could get funding for that some way?
Will it be your advertisers?
Yeah.
Through advertisers.
Yeah, I mean, like, if you look at Grand Metal, I don't have the picture on there, but they do a wonderful job of all the people they have that advertise it, the whole.
Saltman has, they have Saltman as a business, a landscaping company. Yeah. They did it with different things all the way around. I want to say they paid 500 or 1,000 towards it, and then it stays up there, doesn't get taken out.
Each, each advertising place paid something towards it?
I don't know what the amount was, but yeah, that's what they did, they paid for those.
Yeah, that's probably what, you could probably do different, like silver level, gold level type things.
Yeah, those different.
Well, I see, yeah, like in the Cassidy, the picture Cassidy has, you've got little, maybe 12 by 12s, and they've got some longer ones, who I'm guessing cost more.
Yeah, Grand Metal's got the big, was it Hoff, that, Dan's a massive.
J and S or Myron Hoff or something.
Yeah, it's huge. So they probably paid a lot.
Have you reached out to anybody to see if they'd be willing to do that?
I have not.
Okay.
Nope.
If we could get some committal, would that ease your guys on the side panel issue? Just trying to.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if, if, if we had some advertising that was going to help pay for that, absolutely. You know, even if it paid half of, I, I, I just don't, I just don't see paying that amount of money just to have their stats up there. Like, I don't know. I mean, I could be wrong. Of course, I could be wrong, but, like, I'm sitting at a game, I know, I know who has a foul, and I'm not even a, an athlete, you know, but I can see the players, and I know who's had a foul, and I know. So I don't see us spending from our school a lot of money for that. I could be wrong. If someone, I mean, but, or, but if we had some advertising that was going to go on with that, and that helped to cover the cost. My other question is, do, does that require more people to work?
Nope.
The, the person who's sitting at the clock, we don't have to hire another clock person?
It's possible to check, but we're going to have to hire more anyways, because we have to have somebody do shot clock, and that's not under our control.
Okay, I know that.
Yeah.
We already discussed that. But like, then do we have to hire another person who puts the stats up?
I could talk to Pump and see what he says, and then I can talk to, uh, Selfman and stuff, but.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to find out later, oh, by the way, $35 a game for them to put the stats up on there.
And this is gonna come out of the general fund, not the LTFM?
Right.
How soon does this have to be ordered?
If, you could break up this, you know, into, we don't need the panels right now, we can always come back, but I'd say we should probably get this ordered soon, because, and Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, if we ordered now, we won't get it until possibly, was it March?
It's spring. I mean, everything's backed up.
I think it's March.
Now, you said it do, we won't be able to.
Did they give us a quote for a certain length of time?
Uh, yeah, because I got the quote last spring, and it already jumped up about.
I mean, what's our, what's the, what's our active quote now?
In the very bottom, it says it'll take 24 to 26 weeks lead time, 30% down payment, balance due 30 days after shipping, and then price is valid for 60 days.
And when did we get that?
Just got it in October 20th.
And I really just emailed them just today. John, please.
So that quote is valid for?
60 days. So until December.
So.
Thank you, I didn't get that. I mean, I got it, I didn't copy it. And maybe the rest of you disagree with me, I'm just.
No, I'm just trying to make a compromise. So like, if we, you know, just like the advertise, any of the other advertising, so if we could, if we could get, I don't know, some advertising already, like, boom, like, make a few phone calls, get some advertising, and then like Deb said.
What if?
We know we're, we know we're paying for half of it, then it's a no-brainer.
And again, we talked about the advertising, but we make, for the programs, I think we got 4,600 or something like that, you'd have to see. What if we just take that for next year and pay half of it with that, and then if I can advertise, then that money would just go athletics. You know what I mean? Offset it. Does that make sense? So athletics would technically, I mean, assuming we get, which every year that I'm in the A.D., we've upped that actually, the programs, those little things, we, it's like 110, was it 150 or 125 or something?
150.
We've upped it every year, actually, for people adding to it. So I think last year, except we did 46. What if we take, you know, four of that, whatever, that pays for half of it right there, and that's not coming off the school dime at all, it's half. And then it's on me to.
The advertising budget.
The advertising.
The program. Because I still have 36 to 4 grand right now, and I can just hold on that for a bit, nothing crazy. Then I could at least offset half of that cost, and then if I can advertise, that chump would just replenish, does that make sense? Like, maybe I could actually make more? I don't know. I don't know. I'd have to talk to Pump and find out how exactly they're doing it.
Talk to who?
I'm sorry, Gary.
Oh, I was gonna say, I know Gary, I don't know who the other one is. Okay. Okay, you're good. I guess that'd make me feel better, because like I said, I mean, you know, you look at the price of the, you know, the big scoreboard and main piece, that's, you know, say 5,500, but yeah, the little side panels is, you know, 8,000. That's a lot. And yeah, it's, it's nice to have, it's convenient, but when it comes down to it, it's not necessary.
I'm good with the advertising.
You're good? We try to meet in the middle there? Okay.
Use the advertising dollar.
Huh?
Use the advertising dollar.
Or try to get some people who specifically want to advertise, have a panel like that, or whatever they have in the towns around, you know, and if a business or an organization want to, then their advertising's up there, and they pay whatever. We can find out what, what other places have charged.
Yeah, like I said, I could talk to Selfman, they're doing it right now as we speak, and Gary just did theirs.
Right, and then.
A couple of years ago, with the gym. And Kingsland just did it with their football field, so.
Sure, so then we can kind of get, like, what's the, what's the, I don't even know what it would be, but, you know, like, $500 in your name will be up there.
I guess I'd assume it would be size-wise, it's like, probably like a silver, gold, brown, whatever may be.
Sure.
I would assume. It's our case, we can do whatever we want with it. That's a great, we don't have to, we follow the protocol, I mean.
Yeah.
The Legends Club, and here we go, and whatever it may be.
Right, right.
That would make me feel better, especially since it's coming from the general fund that we use for curriculum, you know, stuff the kids need, not the LTFM. Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
I don't know how to say it, but I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of the new scoreboards uh, with the, uh, selling of advertising to help offset the cost.
Okay. I have a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the 2223 superintendent goal update. Um, Jen and I have not been able to meet since the last meeting. I've had things, I know, I've had things in my personal life that didn't have a choice. I had to prioritize that over the board. Um, things now are starting to calm down. Um, I let Jen know this morning that, um, I will get all the goals. I have everything compiled, everyone's, you know, top three, top four grouped out, so I'm getting those in the old format that we agreed upon, the one through five rating. Um, I'll get that sent off to Jen tomorrow. Uh, her and I will try to get a Zoom call scheduled for next week. Um, once her and I hash everything out, uh, we will get it sent off to the board for a quick review, and then we should be able to hopefully add it real quick to approve at the November 30th strategic plan meeting. So, that's all I had. Jen, did you have anything else?
Just a question, would that potentially take some fair amount of conversation by the board at that meeting? I'm just thinking about the, the rest of the, the participants here having to sit through that. Would it be better to just do it at the regular December meeting?
I don't think so, because we kind of all agreed that, you know, when we went through and pick your top two or three, whichever, you know, whichever ones were the highest were the ones that were gonna go in.
I just want to, you know, just consider it of the other people's time, I guess.
Right, right.
I guess we can always just send it out, put it on the agenda, and if it needs to be pulled, we can pull, because we can always pull from a special meeting we can't add to.
Yeah, because we could say, there's, we need to have some discussion, let's pull it.
Yep, we can always pull it instead of adding.
That makes sense.
Okay. Um, next, we have the strategic planning update. Um, as you guys all know, we changed the meeting to Wednesday, November 30th. Um, I let the community members know. Um, I also let Kyle and Dave know that the meeting got changed and what time. Um, I was gonna let you guys all know too, that I got home and I realized I have a Smeck Board meeting that night at 6:30. So I figure I can make it there in 23 minutes, so as long as I'm out of here by 6:10, Dan and those guys are okay if I'm a few minutes late, but I may have to bug out a few minutes early.
I forgot that.
I did too, until I got home and looked at the calendar.
Yeah, I totally forgot about that.
So, um, if nobody has anything else or comments they'd like to add, we move on to item 10H. Um, this was added to the agenda this evening. We'll look at approving the hiring, hiring of Cassidy Milks as the head eighth grade girls' basketball coach for the school year of 2223 with a salary of $2,459.
Uh, I make the motion to approve.
I have a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of hiring Nick Belai as the head seventh grade girls' basketball coach for the 2223 school year with the same master agreement salary of $2,459.
I make a motion?
Okay, motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, we have school board committee reports and comments. Um, first up is community ed. We have not met as a group, um, but it sounds like Kate is hitting the ground running. She sent me an email that she met with Leann today and was already looking for basketball coaches. Um, she'll meet with Leann again on Thursday, so I will send an email back letting her know that we do have a committee. We are here to help with whatever you need. Otherwise, we're just waiting for registration to come out. Uh, next is finance committee.
Audit meeting coming. Yep, audit.
Yes.
That should last hour and a half, Deb, roughly.
Oh, good to know that, ahead of time.
Yeah, about an hour and a half.
Um, next is meet and confer. Um, we have not met.
Did we have a date set?
No, we didn't. We should need to reach out and do that.
Yeah. We, with the strategic planning going on, that's a lot of extra meetings.
After that meeting?
Yeah, do, do you, you think you'd want to meet, meet and confer after we finish strategic planning? Yes? So we, so we don't double up on too many meetings? Huh?
We can wait.
Unless, did you have a time you wanted to meet? Let's just do it when we finish strategic planning.
Okay. Um, next is MSBA. Um, that's me. You guys get all the emails. Um, they do have phase one and phase two coming up for Kyle and Dave. Um, if you haven't seen it yet, Cassidy's now in that position that he'll help get you guys registered for everything that you need for the courses you have to take. Um, also for current board members, they are doing, um, phase three, again, here coming up soon, so if you haven't taken that one, I have, and I know Deb has. It was very, very good.
You guys definitely want to take the training, definitely. It's really, we liked it to reach out, yeah. Learn a lot. You learn a lot.
Um, yes, I believe they're offering phase one and phase two online, and then you also have the option, when you go to the MSBA conferences in January, I believe they're still doing it in person the day before the conferences start. Um, next is Minnesota State High School.
Yeah, I don't have anything on that.
Okay, scholarship committee.
We have not met.
Okay, um, next is certified negotiations. Um, Aaron sent the board an email on, uh, the 31st of October accepting the board's last offer of a one and a half and a two and a half raise for the contract. Um, there were no responses, so I sent Jen and the committee and everyone, including Aaron, an email asking to have the contract updated and suggesting that maybe we meet one more time, just to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Um, still waiting for, we're still waiting for the contract and to get a time for that setup. So hopefully, we will have that done for one of the strategic planning committee meetings. We'll get it tossed on there real quick and get it finished. Um, next is non-certified negotiations.
We haven't had anything in this.
Okay. Um, Smeck Board, Dan sent a very long email. I'll just kind of hit the quick highlight items. Um, the ALC is full, um, the Level Four is full, and we have two students waiting. Um, ALC has now started offering driver's education this semester, and they had a staff development day on the 24th, uh, excuse me, the 24th. Um, they had Mr. Reshetar come in and do a lecture, since he was one of the founding fathers of Smeck. Um, also, uh, Smeck has started planning for the career day for juniors and seniors, and that will be May 17th. And then, of course, we have our board meeting next week if anybody wants to come sit and listen. Uh, next is policy. We both weren't there. Okay, um, systems accountability, we did not meet, and last but not least is buildings and grounds.
And we did meet. We met tonight before the meeting, so we continued discussion, probably the same type of thing I updated you on last month. Uh, we talked about, uh, the external door fobs and rekey, and, uh, the external window shadowing on the front, front doors. Um, Tim Belai is getting, uh, getting some quotes on those things for us. Um, we talked about, uh, the need for water softener and the cleaning of our pipes. Um, we're getting, gonna be getting some, some quotes on doing that kind of stuff as well. Uh, also on window replacements, and, uh, I think Trevor had mentioned that he's, uh, working on getting a quote for the small gym floor, which is getting in really bad shape, so that's the projects we're working on at the moment. Everything is a priority one around here.
Um, district calendar updates, I'll just hit a couple of these. Um, November 21st is the next strategic planning committee meeting at 4 o'clock. Um, November 23rd to the 25th is Thanksgiving break. December 7th is planning, uh, strategic planning committee meeting number three. And then December 20th is the board meeting at 6 o'clock, and then, of course, we hit Christmas and winter break.
Yeah. 30.
Or, excuse me, November 30th, that's correct. Good catch, Kyle.
And you said there's another strategic planning in December.
Yep, December 7th.
That was the last one?
We have two more, but we haven't determined a date or time on those. They will be for a subcommittee.
Oh, just.
This is for the main committee.
Right, and so that's the one where they're gonna finalize.
Yeah, they'll go through, they'll have a subcommittee that'll go through and write everything.
That's in December.
Yep, they'll take all the information, put it together and write it, and then bring it back to the big group to have the big group go through it and review it, see if there's any changes, any additions they want to make.
Okay.
Before we do the finalization. Yep. Um, before you guys head out tonight, we need to have you each sign off on this. This is the resolution. All the board members have to sign it. Otherwise, there's nothing else. We look for an adjournment. I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I'm going adjourned.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:27 PM.